Good afternoon and welcome to the special call meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Ethir Vidic, the 2021 Chair of the Board. I am joined by Commissioner and Vice Chair Jack Owens, Commissioner Linda Hoffler, and County Manager Tim Wilson. Commissioners Jonathan Jones and Ray Freeman are absent this afternoon. We are very pleased to welcome our guests, Congressman G.K. Butterfield and his entourage. We are very privileged that they took the time to stop by this afternoon to visit with us. I also recognize the Mayor of Gatesville, who's in attendance, as well as all other officials that I may not have recognized at this time. At this time, I'm going to ask Vice Chair Owens to lead us in prayer in the predig of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. We are blessed to be here tonight on a special occasion. Lord, to meet with our citizens, Lord, to lift up and raise up this great county of Gates. Lord, we thank you for the attendance of our congressman, Lord, and again of our mayor here in Gatesville, Elton Winslow. And, Lord, we are thankful for the service that they've rendered to our county and to our state and to this nation. Lord, this is a great nation because it is under God. And, Lord, we praise you and give you all the glory for everything that prospers for us, Lord. So, we thank you, Lord. We pray, Father, that you would be with us, Lord, with this pandemic, and, Lord, that you would be watching over our Sheriff's Department, Lord, that you would be watching over Commissioner Ray Freeman, Lord, who was tested positive recently. So, Lord, we, again, we praise you. Lord, we ask your discernment and decision in this meeting and in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. I officially call this meeting to order. Again, it's a privilege and an honor for the Board of Commissioners to welcome our congressman, G.K. Butterfield. To those in attendance, this is an opportunity for you to engage with your congressman. Oftentimes, we see our elected officials on television or in some other venue, but this is your opportunity to engage with our congressman. You will have the opportunity, if you have signed up, to ask a question, have a comment. Congressman Butterfield, I'm going to yield the floor in just a minute. He will make his presentation and go into the question and comment session. This session in total will last about fifty minutes, forty-five to fifty minutes. So, I ask you to be respectful of time so that the person, the next person, has the opportunity to get in their question and their answers and their comments. The Commissioners think it's important that we not engage in open session unless we have a burning question, so that you have all the time you need to ask the questions. We have a closed session after the open session in which we will engage Congressman Butterfield in some high-level talks, nothing nefarious, nothing trans- just as transparent we can be. But we want you to have this opportunity, and please take this opportunity, to engage in questions, if you can, or comments relative to our county. You know, we're not here to engage the high level national about what's going on in all these other places, but if it's relevant to Gates County, of course, you can make that relevant. But we really want the congressman to hear from the citizens of Gates County. We want to make sure his time is efficient and effective while he's here. You will be given a microphone by the Board Clerk. She will come to you, hand you the microphone, and you may ask your question. Relinquish the microphone when you are done, and she will move down to the next person. She has the list of those who have signed up to participate in this. We have a clock that the tech will put up for me so I can monitor the time, and please be respectful of that time. Again, welcome. I'm looking forward to this engagement. I've got open ears, and I'm going to be listening and taking notes, as all of us will. So, again, we're thankful to have him here. He can introduce his team that he brought with him at his own pleasure. But at this time, I relinquish the gavel and the floor to our congressman, G.K. Butterfield. Butterfield, excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to all of you, and thank you so very much for the gracious invitation to come and spend time with you this evening, and just thank you for your leadership in this community. My district director told me as we were driving in a few moments ago that you run a tight ship, and I know it when I see it. You run a tight ship. So, thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to this meeting. I look forward to the questions that may come after the meeting. I've said years and years, over and over, that I don't mind questions. You know, I think it is an obligation of an elected official to be able to answer questions, even if the response is not agreeable. I think it's my duty to answer your questions, and so I've agreed in advance to take some questions after the meeting, and I look forward to that opportunity because that's the way a democracy works. That's the way it should work. To the other county commissioners, thank you for your leadership. To the mayor, I understand the Superintendent of Schools is here. I thank all of you for your leadership, but most of all, thank you to the citizens for your willingness to come up, come to the courthouse this evening and just sit for a few minutes and just hear me ramble for a few minutes about things that we need to talk about. I am your congressman. I've been in this position now for seventeen long years. Doesn't seem that long, but it's been seventeen years, beginning in 2004. I get up every Monday morning or Sunday night and make my way to Washington, D.C., and stay there for four, four and a half, sometimes five days a week, and I try as best I can to represent the interests of my district. I return to the district on the weekend, and we repeat that the following week. I've been doing that now for seventeen years. Since the pandemic started, it is more and more difficult now to get to Washington. There was a time when I would just run up to Raleigh-Durham Airport and make my way through and get on an airplane, if it was on time, and just make my way up to Washington, but I find myself now flying less and less and driving more and more. And so, it takes somewhere between four and five and a half hours for me to drive to Washington. But anyway, that's what I signed up for, and that's what I do each week. And so, over these seventeen years, it's been very challenging, as you can imagine. I started off with President George W. Bush, and you know the list of presidents that we've had since then, and now we have a new president and a new vice president. In each four years, each eight, eight years, it's a different environment. It's a different political landscape in Washington. What really matters, and I meant to turn on this timer because I can get carried away sometimes. It really matters who controls each branch of government. In the legislative branch, of course, we have the House and Senate. Right now, the Senate is evenly divided, fifty-fifty, fifty Democrats, fifty Republicans. In the House of Representatives, where I serve, there are two-hundred-and-twenty-one Democrats and two-hundred-and-thirteen Republicans and one vacancy, I believe it is. It's about a three- or four-vote margin between the two political parties. And so, because the Democratic Party is the majority party in the House, it is the prerogative of the majority to determine the leadership. And so, we have democratic leadership in the House. We have democratic leadership in the United States Senate, democratic leadership in the House. And so, we're trying to do the best we can to meet the expectations of the American people. It is difficult. It is difficult, to say the least. You see it play out on television, you read about it, you hear about it. You stop me in the street, you stop people like me in the street and say, hey, have you guys lost your mind? Why is it you cannot get along? Why is it you cannot legislate and get stuff done? And I say that there is enough blame to go around. There is blame on both sides of the political aisle, but I want to assure you that there is a critical mass of members of Congress, a critical mass who are in the center. And I would like to say that I am aligning myself, I have aligned myself with those in the center, and I believe we're going to get some stuff done. The infrastructure bill is an example of what we are trying to get done. We've talked about infrastructure ever since I've been in Washington. Infrastructure is many things. It's water, it's sewer, it's highways, it's bridges, it's tunnels, it's airports, it's ports. There are a lot of things associated with infrastructure. Schools, you know, would be an example of infrastructure. And so, all four-hundred-and-thirty-five of us have a different interpretation of what infrastructure should be. Those of us from rural communities have a rural perspective. Those from the big cities, they think about ports and airports and freeways and the like. But each one of us has sort of a different perspective on what infrastructure ought to be. I can tell you, for me, infrastructure means the basics. It means water and sewer. It means good schools. It means clean water. It means high-speed broadband. That's what infrastructure, to me, means. And so, we've been talking about infrastructure for years. And finally, I believe it is coming together. Before we left Washington a few weeks ago, in a bipartisan manner, there was an infrastructure bill, a $1.1 trillion bill, that passed the United States Senate on a bipartisan basis. As I recall, there were fifty Democrats, all fifty Democrats voted for it, and seventeen Republicans. It was sixty-seven to thirty-three. That was the vote, and it has passed the Senate. The infrastructure bill carries with it a lot of provisions, and I have those in my notebook here, and I will be glad to discuss it with you during the Q and A, if you want to do that. But infrastructure is a very, very significant piece of legislation that has bipartisan support. It has passed. It has passed the Senate, and now it languishes over in the House, waiting our action. We have $110 billion in there for roads and bridges and major transportation projects, $66 billion for rail, including $16 billion for Amtrak, and another $36 billion for federal state partnership grants, and $11 billion for the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. I said I wasn't going to read it, but I'm on a roll now. $39 billion for transit, $25 billion for airports, and the list goes on and on, including $65 billion for broadband. And I know everyone in this courtroom, and I was a judge once upon a time in my life. I'm trying to remember if I held court here in Gates County. I know I held Reverend Odom. Did I hold court in this room? I know I held court here in Gates County, but every, each one of you certainly understands the critical importance of high-speed broadband, and it's in the infrastructure package. It has passed. It is now awaiting action in the House. And before we left, there was a little intra-party dispute among a few people. And finally, the Speaker of the House worked out a solution, and the solution is we will be voting on infrastructure not later than midnight on September 27th. And so, I want you to put that on your mind, put that on your checklist, to watch very carefully, and we are hoping for a bipartisan, again, a bipartisan infrastructure vote in the House of Representatives. If we pass the infrastructure bill as was passed by the Senate, then it's a done deal. It goes to the President's desk for a signature, and it becomes law. The $1.1 trillion, I think, is spread out over five years, so it's not $1.1 trillion all in one year, but it's spread out over a five-year period, and it's a big deal. It does not add to the deficit. It does not add to the debt significantly. It is a major piece of legislation. Now, there's another piece of legislation that is languishing that is very controversial, and I just want to enlighten you on what that is. It's, it has a fancy name. The President calls it Build Back Better, but anyway, it's three-and-a-half trillion dollars, a lot of money, a whole lot of money. But when you look at the details of the bill, we call it reconciliation. That's the fancy name for it. When you look at the three-and-a-half trillion dollars, it is, it consists of funding that we need in rural America. For example, childcare for working families, tuition-free community college, increased Pell Grants, that's to help kids go to college, increased Pell Grants, forest fire reductions and reducing carbon emissions and addressing drought concerns. We want to invest more in public housing, and the list goes on and on. But it's a very expensive piece of legislation, and we are now putting the pieces together to try to have a comprehensive package that we will discuss and debate and hopefully vote upon before the end of the month. It's called reconciliation. There is great disagreement between the parties, between the two chambers, about how much it should be. Some are saying, three-and-a-half trillion dollars is too much money. It needs to be a lower amount, and it will probably end up being a lower amount. But the target amount right now appears to be three-and-a-half trillion dollars. If and when that passes, there will be fundamental investments, major investments, in what we like to refer to as human infrastructure. We talk about physical infrastructure. This legislation addresses human infrastructure, the people that you care about, your families, your friends, your church people, your neighbors, your constituents, Commissioners, the schoolchildren of this county. That's what human infrastructure is all about. We can quibble about the amount, we can debate the amount, but at the end of the day, there's going to have to be a compromise so that we can get it done. So, as we go back in late September, I think we're back in session on the night of the twentieth, you can look forward to a very vigorous debate on infrastructure and the Build Back Better legislation. So, pay attention. I mentioned the deficit and the debt a few moments ago, and this is a conversation that is necessary. I know people in eastern North Carolina certainly care about the deficit and the debt. I do as well. And if I had to put it in its simplest form, because it would take an hour for me to do justice to the deficit and the debt, and the chairwoman will not give me that much time, and she shouldn't give me that much time, but very briefly, the deficit and the debt. Here's the deal on the deficit and the debt. Your government, our government, spends about four-and-a-half trillion dollars every year. Lot of money. Four-and-a-half trillion dollars, and I'm using round numbers, now you know that, four-and-a-half trillion dollars every year. Of that four-and-a-half trillion that we spend, that people complain about every day, of that four-and-a-half trillion, two-thirds is called entitlement spending or mandatory spending. We don't vote on it. It was voted on in 1965. Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, Veterans Benefits, that's entitlement spending. And of the four-and-a-half trillion dollars that we spend, two-thirds of that, roughly sixty-five percent, two-thirds of that is entitlement. I don't vote on it. I don't vote on it. The other one-third is called discretionary spending. Entitlement on one end, sixty-five percent, thirty-five percent is discretionary spending, which means we have discretion. But here's the way we exercise that discretion. Half of the discretionary budget, seventeen percent, as I recall, half of the discretionary budget goes to the Pentagon. It goes to the men and women in uniform. It goes to the military. It goes to protecting American security. That's where it goes. What's left is about $700 billion, out of four-and-a-half trillion now. What's left on the table is about $700 billion called non-defense discretionary spending, and that's what we fight over every year. That's what we, how do you spend the $700 billion in non-defense discretionary spending? I have my view. Somebody else has her view. We have different views on how it's to be spent. And so, we give the twelve appropriations committees, subcommittees in the House, what we call top-line numbers, and each committee has a budget of how much they can spend for the upcoming year. And I can never put my hands on things when I want it, but the appropriations committees determine how the discretionary money is spent. Oh, what do we spend it for? Education. We spend it for transportation, okay? Healthcare, homeland security, not defense, but homeland security, the interior, housing, you name it. That's where we spend the non-defense discretionary spending, and we do the best that we can. Anytime you have a budget where you spend more than you take in, you're right there with me. I know what you're thinking. You have a deficit. You spend more than you take in, you have a deficit. These Commissioners can't do that. They have to balance their budget. They rely on the tax base. They raise that tax rate two or three pennies, and we got some new Commissioners sitting there four years from now, you know? And so, it's a very sensitive subject. Taxation is a sensitive subject, whether you're talking about it in Gates County or Washington, D.C. Taxation is sensitive and has been since the founding of our democracy. But that is the way we fund governmental services. And so, and so, we've been unfortunate over the years because every president over the last thirty years, Democrat and Republican, whether we're talking about Reagan, Bush, Clinton, Obama, regardless of who you, Trump, Biden, it doesn't matter who you're talking about, every year, for the last thirty years, except for four years under Bill Clinton, we've had a deficit. We didn't have enough money to pay the bills. So, what do you do when you have a deficit? We do the same thing you would do. We have to find it. Have to make it work. Credit card, next-door neighbor, that rich uncle down the street, you make it work. And the only way a government can make it work is to borrow the money. And so, for thirty-plus years, we have borrowed and borrowed and borrowed in order to pay the bills, and it's been expensive. When we thought we were getting the deficit under control and the debt under control, Iraq, Afghanistan, nine-eleven, George W. Bush brought in, excuse me, President George W. Bush brought in Medicare Part D, good program, good program, prescription drugs for seniors, good program, wasn't paid for. Because of the spending, the debt has now escalated to $28 trillion. That's a staggering amount. The briefings that we have received on Capitol Hill suggest to us that while it is serious, it is not time to raise a red flag and to surrender because you measure the debt in proportion to the economy. As I said to a group in Halifax County a few weeks ago, if your teenager ran up a thousand-dollar debt on a credit card and didn't have a job, that would be an emergency. If you ran up a thousand-dollar debt on your credit card and you have a good job and a good bank account, not so bad. But if your teenager did it, it's bad. Same thing with a $15 trillion economy. Because of the size of our economy, the $28 trillion debt is serious, but it is not at the level where we need to just shut down and stop spending. You may say, Congressman, I hear what you're saying. I disagree. We need to stop spending. And when people say that to me, I say, I get it. Tell me where we need to stop spending. Give me some examples. I'll pull out my pen, we'll start writing. Help me understand where we can cut back. And they say, well, foreign spending, the money you all send overseas. I don't agree with you, but let's assume that that's correct. That's less than one-half of one percent of the problem. Yes, it's a down payment, but we have to have allies. We have to have partners. We have to have goodwill across the globe. We cannot be isolationists in America. We've got to have relationships with other countries, particularly third-world countries and countries who are our allies in time of need. And so, that's the foreign affairs budget, and we have to have it. Someone will say, well, food stamps. I was behind someone the other day in line at the grocery store, and they pulled out these food stamps, okay? Let me tell you about food stamps. If it were not for food stamps, and we have a fancy name for it now, it's called SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition, something, 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 I call them food stamps. If we didn't have food stamps in your community, grocery stores would suffer, families would suffer, the school system would feel the effect of it. We've got to have food assistance for low-income people. Oh, we do away with public housing projects. Do you really mean that? You want people living on the street? The homeless population right now in America, I want you to go home and Google it, I want you to look it up, is staggering. I'm not talking about in San Francisco, where I've seen it, in Oakland and New York and other places. I'm talking about in North Carolina, in the first congressional district. Homeless, homeless fam, people are homeless here in North Carolina. Listening to the news last night in Raleigh, they said there are no homes in Wake County less than $900,000 that are for sale. Every single house in the database in Wake County under $900,000 has been taken off the market because they have been bought. People are paying more than the fair market value for property. So, that has drained the market and has raised the cost of housing. People cannot afford housing. And so, we have an emergency. And so, we did something back in 2017 that I did not vote for. It was the tax cut bill, and every politician likes to talk about, you elect me and we're gonna, we're gonna cut your taxes. I mean, that has been going on since as far back as I can remember. But in 2017, Congress passed legislation that took one-and-a-half trillion dollars out of the economy, out of the appropriations process. Let me use the right words, the appropriations process. One-and-a-half trillion dollar tax cut, and it was tilted to the high end and not to the low-end wager. The corporate tax rate has been reduced to a flat twenty-one percent. If you are a corporate owner, you probably say, Congressman, that's a good thing. You don't understand. I've got to buy inventory. I got to pay payroll. I've got to pay this. The cost of my inventory is going up, and I need a tax cut. Get it? Got it? But the fact of the matter is, we drained one-and-a-half trillion dollars out of the appropriations process. So, when President Obama left office, we'd gotten the deficit down to about a half a trillion dollars. When President Trump left office because of COVID and a whole lot of other stuff, it was back up to one-and-a-half trillion. At the end of this year, under President Biden, with all the, all of the emergency measures that we've had to appropriate because of the hurricane down in Louisiana and what we're having to do up in New Jersey, the deficit this year is going to be north of $3 trillion. And so, the national debt will be approaching $30 trillion. When you get to $30 trillion, then it becomes an emergency. And so, the question then becomes, I'm at nineteen minutes, the question becomes, where do we go from here? That's a difficult question. I want to hear from you. I want to hear from you. I want to hear some real, you know, sensible, rational suggestions of what I can take back to Washington as we talk about these issues because they're profound. They are very, very profound. We're out of Afghanistan now. I don't know how you feel about that. Every president in recent memory has talked about it, but Trump talked about it, Obama talked- talked about it, everybody's talked about getting out of Afghanistan. We're out. We're out of Afghanistan. The unfortunate thing is that there are still about ninety Americans left in Afghanistan on the ground who, if we can reach them, would probably want to come home. And so we've been assured by the top leadership in our conference calls in the last few days that we are in contact with these ninety people. We'll be getting them out very soon. But then there are the Afghans who helped us, the Afghan citizens who for twenty years have been friends of the United States. They have interpreted for us, they've done other things for us, and they're fearful of their lives. They want to come to another country. So we've got to figure a way to get them out as well. And so I've rambled on and on, I could go for hours about this. This is what I do every day. This is what I do every day. And some answers I have, some answers I don't have. I like to tell people all the time, I'm a pretty tough guy. You know, I served on the bench, Superior Court bench, here in North Carolina for fifteen years. There's no question that, that I will take offense to. I mean, I, I'm a tough guy. You know, ask me some tough questions and, and I want to hear from you. You might get me back on my heels. I may not be able to, to give you an answer that, that satisfies you or satisfies me. But I want to hear it because this is the democracy that we have. You know, I guess I'll conclude with this, and there's one other thing I was going to talk about. We are elected every two years, House, two years. There was a reason for that. The reason for it is to keep us close to you. That's why I got in my car and drove ninety-five miles today. Because I want to, it's been a couple of years since I've been here. I feel bad about it. My director was telling chairwoman about that. I feel bad about it. I want to go into all of my counties and I want to do it frequently. And you are the furthest point in the district. But we are elected every two years, and, and the founders intended that to be so we could stay close to the people. I have fifteen counties. They're redrawing the lines right now. In three weeks, we will know who's in and who's out. I suspect the gates will remain in my district. I hope that you will. But fifteen counties comprise the district. The Senate is six years. You ever thought about that? House, two years. Senate, six years. And there are reasons for that. We, 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 we are, we represent, we are proportional representatives. All of us represent the same number of people. Without, it's called zero deviation. These computers are so smart now, they can draw the lines right down to, to the household. Zero deviation. My district is identical to the size of Greg Murphy, identical to the size of David Price and so forth and so on. But the Senate is different. The Senate, one hundred senators, two from each state, doesn't matter whether you're California, Rhode Island, or Delaware, you have two senators. That's the way our founders set it up. And so this is a representative democracy. And so I thank you for letting me come tonight to, to hear your views. The final point that I would make, and I, my district director, wherever he went, he's only been with me for ten years. I've been here for seventeen years, he's back there. So I was giving him a little briefing as we were coming in. We have to entertain each other to kind of, kind of make it work. When I first got elected to Congress, no, when I was campaigning for Congress the first time, news reporter walked up to me, stuck a microphone in my mouth and said, where do you stand on the O L F? I didn't know what the O L F was. I confess it now, seventeen, I didn't know what the O L F was. I said, excuse me, what is your position on Washington County and Hyde County with O L F? I said, let me get back to you on that. So I looked into it, it was outlying landing field, and it was a big deal. The, the Navy, as all of you remember, if you've been around for a minute, and all of you have, they were trying to put this landing strip in Washington counties where the jets will take off from Virginia and touchdown and take back off and, and do their practice runs. And the citizens in Washington County didn't want it because of the environment, because of the noise, because of a whole lot of things. And there was a huge dispute between Washington County, Hyde County, where's it, Beaufort County, Washington County, Beaufort County, and the U.S. Navy. And I walked right into the middle of that on the first day. And it was nasty. It was brutal. Let me tell you, it was brutal. So finally, we convinced the Navy to not build the O L F. They had already bought the land. Had already purchased the land and paid for it. Some farmer was just as happy as he could be. He had the money in his bank account. But they pulled the project and took it away from Washington County and I thought we were done. Then there was Gates County. Okay, we're doing this all over again. And so I came up to Gates County, I don't know what building I was in, might have been this building, we sat down with commissioners, sat down with some community people, and they said, Congressman, we don't want that thing in our, in our county. And I said, I understand, I'm your representative. I went through the same thing in Washington County, I'm gonna do the same thing for you. So I went back to Washington, talked to the Navy, I talked to the White House, talked to everybody who would listen. Don't want it in Gates County. Get a call one day from Admiral Fallon, what's his name, F A L L O N, Admiral Fallon. Oh, we on TV out there. Maybe I shouldn't say it publicly, but whatever. Admiral Fallon, he said, Congressman, I want to come pick you up on a helicopter and, and fly you down to Gates County and let you fly around and let you see where we want to put this thing. It's not going to hurt the people in Gates County. Put me on that helicopter on a Saturday morning. Flew me to Gates County, we came across the state line and we flew all over the county and looked at, he said, we want to put it here. You see there are no houses anywhere close by, and this is the perfect place to put it. Our national security, Congressman, depends on putting this thing there. And I love our country, you know, I love it. I understand national security. I'm a veteran, I understand national security. And I was conflicted. I was conflicted between what you wanted as citizens of this county and what the military, our military wanted in, in Washington. Terribly conflicted. On the helicopter going back, Admiral Fallon, and I'm gonna put this in my book, I guess I was telling Reggie that when I was coming down, he said, Congressman, I cannot speak for Congress, but I can speak for the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs, I can speak for the Secretary of the Navy, and I think I can speak for the President of the United States. If you can talk those people in Gates County into opening their arms and accepting this landing field, I've never said this publicly, and I know the media is here, but I'm gonna say it. He said, if you can talk those people into taking this, this, this landing field, they will never regret it. We can invest tens of millions of dollars in the Albemarle region and make the quality of life better. But the commissioners and the community need to embrace this landing field. And so I, I saw an opportunity. So I came to Gates County, I pulled together a group of people, I don't even think these commissioners were, Jack, you might have been around then. I pulled a few people together and I presented the idea. And that was a teachable moment in my life. One person, it wasn't Jack, one person said, Congressman, there's not enough money in Washington, D.C. for us to host the landing field in Gates County. You go back to Washington and you tell who, and I didn't tell them who it was, you go back to Washington, you tell whoever you've been talking to that Gates County does not, we are great Americans, we love, we love our military, but the environmental concerns that we have in Gates County will not support a landing field. And that was the end of the landing field in Gates County. That was a teachable moment in my life, in my political life, in my legislative life, and I never will forget it. Every time I hear Gates County, I think of that story. Okay, Madam Chair, I haven't heard you tap on the desk, but I guess we are pretty close to the finishing time. But thank you, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Butterfield. We will now have questions from the audience. Ms. Chestnut, the clerk to the board, will call your name and take the microphone to you, and you will have a minute to make your comment or ask your question, and Congressman Butterfield will address you. And sir, no, I'm not going to gavel down a congressman, I'm not going to do that.
You can do it politely. You can do it lightly. You're not presided over the floor sometime, they tell us to turn the gavel around and just kind of tap it at the end of the gavel.
All right. I'll tell you when it's time to go. Okay, who's first?
Anthony Sanders.
Do you stand?
Democratic Party Chair.
Thank you, Congressman. I want to say thank you, first of all, for 2020, the contributions and the help that you gave the Democratic Party here in Gates County, and we just want to say thank you for all that you did for us. I talked to a few people before coming here today, and they said they wouldn't be able to make it, but they had a couple of questions, and some of them sent around what our commissioners are already doing. But their question was, for here in Gates County, and you touched on broadband earlier, our county sewer, we would love to have here in Gates County, and the, our water system is like forty-two, three years old. What is it your office can help with our county commissioners, because I do know they are working on some of these projects? What can your office do to help our commissioners possibly get these things done? That was the first question. Second question is, well, not a question, kind of a comment, what can you do, or what can you say to us as leaders here in the county? We've got Republicans, Democrats, independent, unaffiliated citizens here in the county. What can, words of encouragement can you give us? Because every day we cut the TV on, there's something negative that's been put out there by mostly people on the other side of the aisle. What do you say to us to keep us motivated, keep us pushing, whether we're precinct chairs, precinct workers, church leaders, community leaders? How do you, how do you tell us to, suggest us, how do we stay focused on the positive things and not the negative whatevers that some people continue to put out?
Those are fair questions. On the infrastructure, the hundred and, the one-point-one trillion dollars that we should be passing by the twenty-ninth of the month, will include a sufficient amount of money for substantial infrastructure investment in Gates County. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and make sure that that happens. The money will be routed through the governor's office, and then it gets down into the local communities. But if we can pass the one-point-one trillion intact as it is now, there will be sufficient money. Broadband, sixty-five billion. I helped lead the effort on broadband, we wanted a hundred billion, then it went down to eighty, and then it went down to sixty-five. But they're telling us forty-five will actually be used for deployment of the broadband. And we think we can get most of it done in forty-five billion. On, on civility, that's what you're talking about, civility. Everybody in this room cares about civility. I go to Lowe's, I go to Harris Teeter, I go to the stores and people behind me in line. I know what America is thinking. I know what America is saying. They may not say it to our face, but I know what they're saying behind our back. They're saying, if you all can't get along, if you all can't put some of your differences aside and get stuff done and, and, and make this world better so that I can give to my children more than I had when I came along, then I think we need to get somebody else to fill that seat. That's what America is saying. And we've got to listen. It, it is a new paradigm now in Washington. That's why we're trying to build problem solvers, that group in the middle. In the Democratic Party, my party, Lord, don't get me, Cal, don't get me in trouble. Democratic Party, we've got different points of view. We've got those on the extreme. Republican Party on the extreme. You know it, I know it. But if you would define the mass that's in the middle, I suggest to you that there are two-hundred-and-eighteen votes out of four-hundred-and-thirty-five, which is what it takes, there are two-hundred-and-eighteen votes in the middle that I believe we can get stuff done. It will reveal itself when we go back week after next. That's, that's when the rubber will hit the road and we will see if we will have the same bipartisanship in the House that the senators had in the Senate. And they built, seventeen Republicans to vote, vote fifty Democrats. They got it done. And, and, and I'm waiting to see what's going to happen in the House. We've got to have a country that's better than what we've seen over the last six, eight, ten years. It, it has to be better. When I came to Washington, went to Washington, when you sent me to Washington in oh-four, it was partisan. It's been partisan for years. Claude, didn't you work in one of the congressional offices once upon a time? Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's always been partisan, but it hasn't been, hasn't had the ranker. It hasn't had the meanness, the mean-spirateness that we see play out on both sides of the aisle. And we, we, we can do better, and we, we're going to have to do better because, because if we don't, we're going to find ourselves at home, and some other people are going to be holding these seats trying to, trying to make it work. That's enough for that. I think you, you get my drift. I don't want to invade on somebody else's time, but I think that's, I pledge to you, it's not a campaign speech tonight, I mean, I'm just giving it to you straight. I pledge to you that I'm going to be part of that group in the middle, the problem solvers. I want to solve problems, I want to compromise, you know? Compromise is a bad word to some people in Washington. I believe in compromise. And we will see in the next few weeks how that plays out.
Thank you. Ms. Chestnut?
Next is Dr. Barry Williams, Superintendent of Gates County Public Schools.
It's fine with me.
It's okay with me, it's okay with you, Congressman?
I just want to say thank you for coming to Gates County. You could be anywhere this evening, but you came to Gates County. And the things that I hear is one-point-one trillion, I hear infrastructure, I hear schools, I hear grants, I hear things that you have told us today that are very important and touch my heart. I think for what you do, you do a really good job. And your legacy isn't just going to be a congressman, your legacy is on the impact of the things that you help people and the people that you meet and the children that graduate from, from high school and go on to college, military, or, you know, in industry or inherited position. But I just wanted to say thank you. But I think a lot of times when we have meetings, town hall meetings, people get together and they share their complaints. They talk about what is wrong with, you know, their school system or what is wrong with the county. But I would like to share a little bit of both about, real quickly, Madam Chair, about the positive things that's happening in Gates County schools. I honestly feel like we have a row-your-boat philosophy, because we're all in this boat together. And our individual oars are moving constantly with a mission and a vision for our school system to always improve. Over the past eighteen months, we've responded to adversity over a pandemic, you know that. We've had to row harder and never allow our oars to stop moving. We've had to adapt to the changing tides and wind. With the COVID storm arrived, we kept rowing. When there was no direction, we kept rowing. When people spoke negative, Gates County schools and the Gates County commissioners kept rowing. And when situations were unpredictable, unorganized, and unregimented, we kept rowing. When it seemed impossible to go on, we kept rowing. Gates County has that never-give-up mentality, and that's the foundation of our success. And I, like you, prepare to fail, fail to prepare. And I've got all these notes and don't really want to, you know, I, I guess, tell you everything that's in my notes. But not long ago, last year, in March the seventh, two thousand twenty, we did the impossible. Gates County, small rural America, low wealth, build a brand-new middle school. It is immaculate. And we renovated a part of the school too as well. And that was huge. And then on March, the next week, the governor shut us down. So our school is practically brand-new. But it's a beautiful school, it's a beautiful facility. I, of course, would invite you to come anytime to our middle school. Another thing that the commissioners have blessed the school system because we get our money from state, you know, federal and local. Out of one-hundred-and-fifteen school districts, did you know that our teachers only get a small supplement and we ranked at the bottom of one-hundred-and-fifteen school districts? I believe we were one-hundred-and-ten. The commissioners provided money for the school system to double the teacher's supplement. I think that is, you can't beat that. Something else, and I learned a lot right here, and, and it's very interesting, now I know why that it has been so hard to get a ROTC program. And what I've just received, we have established a Navy National Defense Cadet Guard. We've got twenty-five students that are going to be fitted on Friday for new uniforms up in Norfolk. And they're going to come back and they're going to lead, they're going to have community involvement, teamwork, they're going to be exposed to career pathways, they're going to go to Mississippi, they're going to go to Washington, D.C., they're going to get on active military ships, oh, it's just going to be great. We also have a county that pulls together such as something called a Saunders Science Program, and we also have a Gates County Schools Community Partnership. I see Mr. Roundtree sitting out there, who's in charge and leads all this, and that's just the care, the engagement. You care, you want to be here. And we also have something from our board chair, it's called Gates on the Go, and he provided- And he provided a lot of money for kids to use drones and technology that we can use to make kids better in 21 years in 21st century. So we do have challenges. And those challenges are, of course, internet access for students. We have increased technology for our students and teachers. We have air conditioning and heating upgrades. I made my director of maintenance come in case I, I said something wrong. We have additional, we need additional classrooms at our high school for my Navy National Defense Cadet Corps. Athletic facilities, such as an athletic track. We have buildings, Congressman, built 1950. But we got first-class teachers and we got excellent students that are learning. And, you know, we have those other facility upgrades that you were talking about, the infrastructure piece with the roofing, the plumbing, and the electrical.
He's on the last page, I see.
This is it, Greg, this is it. So this is, this is to sum it up, this is to sum it up. And you can take this back to Washington. With all the challenges we face, the one thing I'm certain of is the support of the county commissioners and the citizens of Gates County for the school district. We always work together, we discuss, we compromise. Sometimes we disagree, believe it or not. But at the end of the day, we always figure it out and we make things work. Gates County is a good place to live. Don't forget us, you wouldn't be here if you didn't. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you. The softest spot in my heart is reserved for my mother and my father. But the next softer spot would be the, spot would be the teachers that I had when I was in elementary and high school. Thank you.
Ms. Chestnut?
Ma'am Collins?
Take the mic, sir.
Good afternoon. We appreciate your appearance here today to answer some of our problems in Gate County. On the infrastructure related issues and some of the money that's gonna be passed down from Washington to the state of North Carolina, down to Gates County, I would like for, maybe you would have the consideration. Because I live in Gates, little community right directly before you, you get into Gatesville. Right there on Tyler Road and Johnny Harrell, there's a problem there with, with people running that stop sign. I see it every day. I live right on the corner. They run that stop sign, some runs at 65, 70 miles an hour. And I see it every day. It's not maybe, maybe two days out of the month that I don't see it. But most of the time, they run that stop sign. And right now, the, the fields have grown up and you can't see across the, the direction. I think they need some type of warning light or a stoplight or something there to protect the citizens of North Carolina Gates County and the people that's coming through that area. Because it is very dangerous. And I, I'm hoping that-
It's kind of outside of my jurisdiction, but you seized a good, good place to say it.
Right.
And so hopefully we'll get to the right people.
Hopefully, hopefully some of that infrastructure money will get down to Gates County where maybe they can take care of that problem.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Ms. Chestnut?
Good afternoon. How you doing Congressman?
Yes.
I contacted your office a year and three months ago. And I talked to Mr. Spruill. And we had a long conversation about some issues with my community here in Gates County. That's my neighbor right here, Mr. Collins. We stay in a neighborhood that's predominant black. Majority of the people there are retired, like Mr. Collins. I'm probably the youngest one on my whole block. It's approximately 25 to 30 people that stay in that radius that I live in. When I contacted your office, there was an issue with a fox pin being put in our community. A tract of land was bought at 260-some acres. And only thing we asked for was a moratorium to protect our property so that that fox pin couldn't be right under us. And we heard that noise constantly. And because Mr. Collins, like my rest of my neighbors, he's retired military, they came there for the pleasure of enjoying their neighborhood. When I contacted your office, I stressed to Mr. Spruill as well that Mr. Representative Hunter was on board with the residents there. That we should have a moratorium setbacks for the fox pins. Let me give you a little history about this as well. Gates County, out of the five surrounding counties around it, has more fox pins than five counties. We have seven, eight now. They run all times of the night. Now we're seeing dogs come out because I'm catching them in my yard. There have been notice of coyotes in my yard. And like I just said a few minutes ago, we have elderly people in my neighborhood that they enjoy hanging out. So what's gonna happen is, is they're gonna get attacked by that. I have also petitioned wildlife to give us regulations as well as setbacks for our property. This, these fox pins are at least 50, 20 feet from my property line. Pretty much standing in your backyard. They run seven days a week, they run Sunday mornings. We got called the sheriff office because there's a noise nuisance in Gates County. They refused to write any citations. I have called them at least 45 times myself. My neighbors have called, they have noise. And we want to know what your office can help us with. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, if I were in your position, I would understand and appreciate where you're coming from. From the federal perspective, there is absolutely nothing a federal representative can do on a noise complaint, on a public safety complaint in a local community. That would be the jurisdiction of local law enforcement and local government. And when we go in a private session in a few minutes to talk about some important things, it's called money, when we go in the back room, I will bring that up and encourage some action. I don't know if the commissioners have the jurisdiction to do anything about it or the, or the town council, but you've raised the point and I will assist you, all right?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Chestnut, is that the last one on the list? And that person is? Mr. Felton, Chair of the Board of Education.
Congressman Ray Felton. I, I have, I'm not speaking about Gates County, I'm speaking about United States. Last week and the week before, General Motors shut down because of a lack of chips. When are we gonna do something to bring chip production back to the United States? Because as we stand now, if we have a war and China is not our ally, we're gonna be out there going back to bows and arrows to fight with. And I don't think we're gonna win with them. I, I think it's a major national concern. Thank you.
China is a problem? Former president said that. Current president has said that China is a problem. And the more we can encourage production and manufacturing in the United States with less or not reliance on the Middle East and on Asia, the better off we're gonna be. And what the gentleman has raised is absolutely accurate. We have thousands of cars that are lined up at the port that cannot be delivered to the dealers. Why? Because they don't have a little dag on chip that runs the electronics in the car. Why? Because the chips are over in China. Some blame it on President Trump's tariffs. I'm not a ways and means person, I'm not a tax expert, I don't know where the fault lies. I just know the problem. Whether it is the tariffs that have been placed on these products or whether it is the high demand for chip production, I don't know. But I agree with you and I will, I pledge to you that I will work to do everything within my power to try to persuade and encourage "Make it in America." You know, years ago, we used to call it "Made in America." We're now calling it "Make in America." We've got to make these chips in America. We have the ability to do it, we have the, we have the resources to do it. Silicon Valley is, is equal to any, any high-tech place in the world. We need, we need STEM workers. So if you have young people who are interested in furthering their education, making a lot of money and having a good, good living, tell them to go into STEM, science, technology, education, mathematics. We need a million and a half STEM workers over the next five years. At the rate we're going, we will only graduate 1 million. That means we're gonna be 500,000 short. So that presents an opportunity for our competitors overseas to step into that market and to, and to make the chips. Not just chips, but other things as well. So your point, your point is certainly, certainly well taken. Well taken.
Thank you Congressman Butterfield.
And, you know, I, I just, you know, when, when I hear people talk, things pop through my mind. Had a call today with the assisted living owners, people who own assisted living facilities across the United States. I'm number two on the health committee. So they had a call with me today. I wrote down some statistics. 10,000 people turn 65 every day. I didn't know that. I know a lot of people turn 65, I remember when I turned 65. Got a nice card from the president that day, that's why I remember it. But 10,000 people turn 65 years of age every day, we gotta do something about that. In the next 12 years, they told me, there will be more senior citizens in this country than children. Chew on that for a minute. In the next 12 or 13 years by the year 2034, there will be more seniors than children. And we've got to have the infrastructure in place to support our seniors. Not just today, but in the years to come. That includes me, it includes you, includes people that we care about. So we've got to do more than just protect the country and cut taxes and cut education and do some other radical things. We've got to invest in people because that's the future. 700 vacancies in assisted living facilities. I asked the CEO of this company, and I won't call the name of the company, it's one of the big ones, why do you have 700 vacancies with 10 million people unemployed in this country? 9 million people unemployed in this country. He said, because people are scared to work in assisted living facilities where COVID is rampant. Because we have patients that are dying and people suffering from COVID. And we, we have 700 vacancies Congressman, all across the country. Can't you all do something to put this COVID thing to rest because it's killing our industry? And we're having to close our facilities. I told him I would share that with the group I'd be talking to tonight, and so I did. Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank all of you who submitted a question or a comment. I think it was very beneficial. We thought it important that you have an opportunity to greet me and engage with our Congressman. I take the floor back. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A for Economic Development. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna take a 10-minute break so we can transition back into the conference room for closed session. Thank you again for coming. When we come out, we will adjourn. Boom. (Applause)
Good evening again. I entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I second.
It's been properly moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.